Mr. Young.
I would like to ask for item under executive session, D, this is item twelve D, to be added personnel superintendent office.
Okay. Okay. So we're adding item D under, item twelve rather, we're adding D for personnel for executive session. Requesting a motion to approve our agenda.
Some.
Okay, the motion is made, okay, thank you. The motion is made by Mr. Sparks and the second is made by Mr. Smith, any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, raise your hand. And it is unanimous. Now moving along to item five, school and faculty staff recognition, this time we'll have student recognition, Zion Dawson, Columbus High School, McKeller Technology.
Good evening. She is running a little late, she's at cheer practice, tryouts. So she's running a little late. Just received that text message, she's on her way. The mission of Columbus Municipal School District is to provide students the skills necessary to college workforce or to get ready by building bridges among students, parents, community, and all the student employees. The vision of student center is extremely driven. Today we want to recognize the young lady who is demonstrating, who is already demonstrating her skills to the world before she graduates, she's a tenth grader at Columbus High School. A tenth grader in the cows, basic medical technology class. Zion stepped in and performed medical technique, attorney, only staff member who suffered from a medical issue. Not only did she impress faculty, the nurse, paramedics, but the industry staff member was more amazed by her skills than being concerned about his injury. She was recently featured in the commercial dispatch for her efforts. On behalf of Columbus Municipal School District, we would like to recognize Zion Dawson. She gets here with her certificate and her recognition.
Okay, and a picture, thank you. Now moving on to item six, Board of Education, policy B, C, B, D. Consideration to approve our minutes for February the fourth, February the eighth, February the sixteenth, and twenty-third. Requesting a motion to approve our minutes. I'll make the second, the motion is made by Dr. Shoemake, and the second is made by myself, any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. And it is unanimous. Moving along to trustee district review, which is trustee travel and report. We did have two of our board members that traveled down to Jackson for the annual MSBA conference, which was held last month. Dr. Shoemake and Mr. Sparks, do you want to give us some comments?
My apologies, I seem to be a victim of the pollen. It was a great two and a half day conference, and I think one of the sessions that really impressed me was one that talked about how important our responsibilities are as board members, how we needed to be sure to remain, you know, on top of, on top of all the rules and regulations, and things, anything concerning ethics. And one of the other things was really cool was we had a lot of opportunity to hear students. And the students that were there for us to engage with were ones who had written essays that were, excuse me, judged by a very strict panel. And they came from the four congressional districts, so we got to hear their thoughts. And as an old person, I found this especially interesting on social media and how that is impacting the lives of students these days. And I think for me, it was an eye opener. We actually had three of the four students saw, well, two of the students saw the downsides, two of them also saw that there were some upsides. But you have to control your social media, otherwise it controls you. And I think they were very perceptive in their comments, in their presentations. So those were a couple of things that I really, really enjoyed.
In some of the sessions that I attended, one of the things that Dr. Tori Arnold Holloway was speaking about was the importance of the collaboration between the superintendent and the board. And how important it is for the two to collaborate and communicate without fail. In a nutshell, if the baby's ugly, then the superintendent should let the board know that the baby's ugly. There are no big eyes, no little use, no secrets between the two parties in order to move the district forward. And also, there was a house bill that was being discussed where the school boards will be able to select guardians, armed guardians, in the school district. Which of course, this will be strictly voluntary, and it's not a house bill, but I don't know whether they have any action on it yet, but it's something to take into consideration. They did have a person in law enforcement that was there and asked his input. And he shared with everyone that as teachers and educators and people of the like, that they work with compassion. And it would be hard pressed for an individual that's a teacher or anyone in a school district to actually pull a weapon to cause harm to any child. And he was basically saying that they should leave the guns and things of that nature to law enforcement and not, you know, put that added pressure on educators. Thank you.
Sorry about that. Thank you all very much for those comments regarding the MSBA conference. Now, we'll move on to the next item, discussion and consideration of the capital improvement plan for CMSD, this will be Mr. Little.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Little, and thank you.
Yes, ma'am. You should have the reports of the routine maintenance and the additional, the maintenance and on the emergency maintenance. Under the emergency maintenance, as Stokes shared about the fire door magnet, the parts were ordered, we have completed that, parts came in and we got that installed. So I just wanted to, because it just says that they were ordered, I wanted y'all to know that we did receive it and get that fixed. On these reports, do y'all have any questions? After y'all looked at them.
Or you have any questions?
Yes, Mr. Little. I know on the big capital improvement, improvement plans, the one with all the nice colors, the yellow and green and red, there have been some red ones that have been there for quite a while. And I believe that's keyed as you need more information.
Can you tell me which ones?
Well, it's not in particular, well, it's more information needed to complete the project. And I just was wondering, is there any way that the board can be of assistance in, you know, helping you get product, helping you get information? For instance, Fairview, the playground north side, it has pea gravels, not ADA approved.
Right.
So what information is needed, for instance, with that?
On that, well, what I was asked is to put pea gravel in to them, and that's not ADA approved. I was actually speaking with Mr. Chapman just a little while ago before the meeting. Looked into the areas that we do have that are ADA, now have a product that I can buy and put in there, and I've got the quotes and all that stuff. And as a matter of fact, we were talking about it right before the meeting.
Great. It is just things like that where, where I know there have been red lines or red indications for a while. And I wanted to make sure that if you were getting the information you needed.
And there is, like at Fairview, we wanted the concrete, you know, poured for the basketball goal. We have the PO and everything for that, but every time that they get ready to come, you know, set it up and pour it and all that, it rains. So, but we're just waiting on good weather to get that, so that'll be another one marked off of this.
Great. And then the last one, if you'll indulge me here, is the Cook Auditorium sound system. Because I thought Mr. Lawton was working on something on that, getting, getting something together on a new sound system. Because that's our, you know, our big space, and we have a lot of people, and sometimes the sound system doesn't cooperate.
I know in the past, he had brought something with some budget numbers, and he was asked to go back and redo all that, you know, to try to do something with it. But where he got to, I'm not sure.
Okay. Maybe, Mr. Chapman, we could check with the office and find out where that is? Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other board members?
I had a really quick question, Mr. Little. I don't think this is on our list because I've gone through it and I know we need to update this list again. We have some of the sidewalks in some of the buildings that are crumbling, you know, when you drive up. Have we looked at those items or are we, or is that on a working list?
It is, we have looked at some of them, we have not done anything with them yet. Like over at Franklin, I was looking at that one today around the Magnolia, or the other day, around that Magnolia tree. And I was trying to, I was gonna call and find out, is that our sidewalk or is that a city sidewalk?
Oh, okay.
You know, because I don't want to start tearing into something and it not be ours. Because I know there is drainage that goes in under that sidewalk. There is an area on that road that goes up to the side of it, that there are some damaged parts in the road. And I'm talking with Mr. Bush about it, and we're trying to get together. He's with Casey Bush with the city, and we're gonna try to get together and look at these areas and find out what is ours exactly and what is the city's.
Okay. So is it just Franklin like that, or do we have any other schools like that?
Franklin is the worst, it's right around that Magnolia tree where the roots have kicked the sidewalk up. And there is a company that I've talked to that they will come in and actually level it out. But I think that one's just so bad that it's gonna have to be taken out and the roots cut out, and then repoured back in.
Okay. Okay. Last question. The, the material that you picked up and you, where you use for the parking lot at the football stadium, is that the same material that we're using at the high school for the parking lot?
No, that is, that is actually crushed concrete.
Okay.
You're talking about on the section that goes where they go over to sale?
Yes.
Yeah, that is crushed concrete. What we put in the holes over at the high school, we did do some with slag, and then I found a company that actually has asphalt in a bag.
Okay.
And it's cheaper than, the reason I went with that is, number one, it holds for a long time if you do not, you know, if you're not able to get it all put out at one time. Whereas if you order it from a cold mix place, it just sits out in the weather, and then you have to reactivate it to get it going. But at the high school, we're just using that stuff, they call it asphalt in a bag, is pretty much what they call it. We've used some of that at the athletics also for the potholes. But that on that road that goes over to sale is actually crushed concrete.
Okay. Yeah, because some holes at the high school have worn in again until we get to that, those items again, we talked about for the future. We'll be working with Holly on that list. Okay, thank you. Any other board members have any questions? All right, thank you so much, Mr. Little, thank you. Now we have discussion of the Hunt Campus Recovery, review of expenditures and reimbursement and payment for projects. Mr. Taylor Gill. Thank you, Mr. Gill, and welcome.
Thank you, thank you. So things are moving really fast. In fact, they're moving so fast, I came up here on Monday to meet with Ms. Rogers and Ms. Wilson and Mr. Chapman to go over the project and to remind everybody what was in it and where we were. Right now, the, the project is in final review in DC, it has four steps in DC. On Monday, it just had gone through the first step, it had gone through the, the Office of Legislature Affairs, it went through that. I talked to FEMA this afternoon on the way over to Columbus. It's actually gone through three steps now, so it has one more step, it's the Office of Homeland Security. And they, our contact with FEMA hoped that even maybe by tomorrow, first next week, it'll go through that, that, that step. Once that step's completed, the money will be transferred to MEMA. At that point, money will be quote, "in the bank" and we can, can start. Once we get that confirmation that the money is available, we can get with the low bidder, see if he wants to, either he can hold his price for, for what the board accepted, or we can, we can just officially reject the bids and rebid it. If we do rebid it, it'll just be a quick three day process, all the documents are done, so we'll get the board's approval to readvertise, readvertise and rebid it quickly. So hopefully it'll go, it'll go very, very quick. I do recommend, Ms. Young, that once we, once we know the money is there, I think the board, we'd like to meet with the board in a workshop setting and review the project again, review the proposed use of it, the district share of, again, where repair costs are funded, actually take out the insurance money. FEMA pays seventy-five percent, MEMA twelve and a half, and its district is liable for the, for the remaining twelve and a half percent of that. And any of the improvements that were beyond the repair that we've identified through ordinance, those, those extra, extra work, the district would be, would be responsible for a hundred percent of those, those costs. But we'd like to, once we know the money's there and we're ready to move forward, I think it'd be wise to meet with the board for, for an hour or two, probably a couple hours, and go through the project to get everybody on board.
Okay. We'll be ready and available for that, we're excited.
So, so, so as soon, as soon as we know that the money's been transferred to MEMA, I'll let Ms. Chapman or Ms. Wilson or Ms. Rogers know, and then they can get with the board and set up a workshop or whatever, whatever works best. And at that point, we can move forward. So we're close.
We're close.
That's also why I came up Monday, because I was so close, I wanted everybody to understand, you know, what we're, what we're gonna do, because it's so close. And it's now, I can see light at the end of the tunnel, very, 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 getting brighter every day, so.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you so much, Mr. Gill. One last question. You and I were speaking momentarily before the meeting, you explaining the process of what happens once the money is there, we have the work session, and then the next part of that, for the board, our responsibility to possibly, you know, have our city officials and other dignitaries there for groundbreaking.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, we will arrange, set that all up, so yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. All right, safe travels.
Any questions from board members? Sparks, Brown, Smith?
Thank you.
Thank you. We're very excited. Next we have contract renewals and updates. Board, this is for our review. Do we have any questions about our 2023 FYI contract renewal list? Yes, ma'am?
There we go. Just a general question, I noticed, of course, that a lot of these contracts are, most of them are coming to an end. most of them are coming to an end in June or July, which is normal. And, um, I was wondering, when, when do you start the, when do you start the new process to make sure that you're not, you're not in a contract that is a perfect? I know it.
Any other questions? Next we have, um, the dual litigation settlement update. Okay. Oh, okay. Um, moving on to the next item. Um, consideration and, and or discussion to approve newly appointed board member to attend the MSBA Basic Course for New School, School Board Members on June the ninth and tenth in Jackson, Mississippi. Requesting a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second, I'll make the second. Um, Dr. Brown made the motion, and I made the second. Any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. And it is unanimous. Okay. And, um, the next item, the board, is just a board reminder for the Mississippi Ethics Commission State of Economic Interest that is due on May the first, um, of this year. I think we give that to, uh, Ms. Velma. Mrs. Woodard, excuse me. Um, next we have our goal updates. Um, Policy BA, Student Attendance Report. Um, board, I'm sure we've had an opportunity to look over that. Do we have any questions, concerns? Yes, ma'am? Can you talk up?
No, I just, the microphone's not working.
We'll get it fixed.
Does that, oh, yeah, that does work. Okay. I had just basically, I suppose it's a question I ask every year. Um, I was going through the, looking at the discipline reports, and, um, it seems as if a lot of our discipline reports are around, uh, problems on the buses. So I would ask whoever would be focused on that to be thinking about a way to, since we know what's gonna happen in the school year twenty, what, twenty-three, twenty-four, to please see, come up with some ideas on how we might be able to, to deal with that. Just because we know it's gonna happen. And, um, we also know that fights in the schools are gonna happen. So if I would be interested, I think the board probably would be as well, on plans to address that before, before it, you know, pops up again. We know it's gonna happen, unfortunately. So we want to get ahead of the curve. That was it.
Any other questions, concerns regarding, um, excuse me, student attendance, school safety reports, student discipline, or dropout report, and our safety report? Um, next, under the next item, we have the interim superintendent's updates and reports. We have our first, um, principal update, which is the Columbus Middle School, um, Mrs. Kimberly Williams, our principal.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. And welcome. Thank you for coming.
Yes, ma'am. Always a pleasure to update the board about the wonderful things going on at Columbus Middle School. Okay. So far, we are in our, at this present moment now, we are conducting our nine weeks' benchmark assessment. Um, of course, we always, it's always gonna be something. We had a slight technology glitch, but, um, Mrs. McGee and her technology team, under Mr. Chapman's leadership, came rescue me, um, did an awesome job. We are up and running. Uh, we were only down half a day, so, um, we are up and running. We are doing well with our testing. Uh, Ms. McGee has a staff over there with us that if we're experiencing any technology, uh, difficulties as they arrive, we have a team there that's ready to get us up and running. So we do appreciate, um, that support. Um, so of course, you all know that we have been participating in our, every round of three weeks' assessment. So far, we are consistently at a average of a D, which we, that is an improvement from the F. However, we are showing gains towards being on the traject- trajectory of a C. The thing about it is, um, keeping the students to be consistent as the weather starts to change, um, keeping our teachers healthy in the classroom as the weather starts to change. So, um, some of those challenges that Dr. Schumay just alluded to, we already experienced some of those growing pains at the middle school. And I'll talk about that when I get ready to talk about our demographic page. But we are showing strong growth right now to be on the track for a C. If we miss the C, it'll be just like we just missed the other letter grade, which I don't wanna say. But it'll just be, right, Dr. Schumay, you're right. It'll just be mere points away from it if we don't get to that C right now, just based off the data. So our reading proficiency is up to twenty-eight. That is the highest that it has been, even with our, um, grading from last year. We are up, our reading proficiency is up to twenty-eight. Our math is, um, up from math. We do have a great consultant. He is leading our, um, team well. The team is understanding the assignment. Uh, we did have one setback with personnel. However, she is pulling through, and, um, she is, you know, pressing towards the mark to ensure that we do have good growth for math. I'm exceptionally proud of our eighth grade growth in math standards. So in the first beginning of school, they're gonna always be low, but we have stayed on our trajectory of growth for ELA standards, and we are doing exceptionally well with our ELA standards as well. When I break down the data, I break down the data by teacher by teacher, student by student, um, grade by grade. So that data is published every three weeks, very transparent, so we can see the spots that we need to, um, support a little bit better. Okay, moving on. Are there any questions about the assessment results? Right now, I do not have the assessment results from the benchmark assessment. We should get those assessments, um, over the spring break. When we close out the assessment, I'll be able to give you a better report from our nine weeks' benchmark assessment, uh, when we meet again in April. All right. My school enrollment is six sixty-one. Um, looks like we're losing one each week and gaining two. So we are battling between still, at this point, losing, gaining, losing and gaining. Uh, but we are reminded of the full academic year. We know if we are receiving any students at this point. Those students do not count in our academic model, although we are still giving them the appropriate educations that, that's due to them. But at this point, a student entering into Columbus Middle School, they do not count in our academic model as they have missed the full academic year. Two or more students who are absent, uh, who were absent in February, we were up to thirty-three percent. I don't know if they were battling, all of them battling the cold, um, COVID. It has subsided a little bit, but it looked like the flu sort of took a rapid edge towards our building and came in. Um, some teachers were out, um, considered, a lot of teachers were out, um, two and three days with the flu. So I think the flu bug has passed. I'm hoping that Mr. Pollen stays down so that we can keep our students, um, healthy and in the building as we are entering our crunch time. Teacher attendance rate, again, it was down to ninety-two percent from ninety-five percent. Let's talk about the discipline. We had an uptick a little bit, well, not a lot of bit, up with our discipline. Uh, we went from having eighteen referrals in February to sixty-nine referrals in March. I know that is a great gain in the wrong direction. However, I'm not alarmed. It happens every year towards this time. Like Mississippi weather is sort of funny. One day is hot, the next day is cool, and I, when L students get hot, they sort of start to agitate and aggravate each other. Um, but we are on the journey on the spot with everything. I do have those numbers, um, broken down as to how we receive those numbers. Um, the mo- the highest number of, um, incidents were fighting. We had about seventeen fights in February. We had about seventeen fights. Um, three happened in one day, unfortunately. Um, I was present for all three fights. I moved throughout the building to assure that. Uh, my number one goal when the students are fighting, it will happen, but I am desperately trying to keep our students safe. So as I've told you before, I get in the fight to break the fight up, to ensure that, um, the students are safe and that they can go home to their parents the same way that their parents sent them. It is just, um, a personal goal that I have to make sure that I keep order and stay, keep those students safe. Um, so we did have seventeen fights, which ended up with thirty-four suspensions, because obviously they can't fight by themselves. And the only second thing that we had is just disruptive behavior, and students get a little aggravated and agitated, and, um, they want to have their way as a middle schooler, and we have to tell them that, you know, we have to have the Columbus Middle School way. So we did have twelve incidents of disruptive behavior. Any questions about the, um, demographics of the month?
Ms. Chairman, I have a question. Uh, Ms. Williams?
Yes, sir.
During the fight, you said you had seventeen in the month of February.
Yes, sir.
How did that, the month of February compare to the prior month, before the fight?
So as far as fights, so in February, I may have had seven.
And what now?
Seven in February.
But what was the seventeen? I thought there's seventeen for the month of?
I mean, if, I'm sorry. The way the board report is written right here, I'm always reporting a month back, so it was seven in January.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Mm-hmm. Any other questions about the monthly demographics?
Um, what are we doing to curtail the fights, or what are, what are we doing actively to ensure that the students are, hopefully, we're able to get them on the right track?
So once a student engages in a physical altercation for the first time, we go through the process of our MTSS process. Automatically, they are put into the tier process. We start to do an intervention set with them. As Shumpert Chapman, she comes in, she hosts groups, or sometimes individual counseling. Our, um, and we plot their data, and they are able to move off the tier process if they have not had another altercation. Um, so those students, they go to anger management. That is the option, um, that parents have to send their students. But the parents don't, just don't send the students. The parent attends anger management with the students to ensure that it is a family dynamic and is a family involvement of the, um, altercation. And the, in the, um, anger management, they're giving them strategies, um, coping strategies on how to do de-escalation and things of that nature. We do have Mr. Henry Williams that comes in. Um, he comes in under Mrs., um, Shumpert Chapman. He comes in, he meets with students. Um, he's counseling them, giving them other advocates, other ways, other routes to resolve their conflict outside of just a physical, um, altercation. So we are counseling those students now. Those are the fights that are reported, but every day a child is coming to us, or every day a mom is calling us saying social media played a part in a big argument last night. This is, we get a, we get at least five phone calls, if not every day. Almost every day, parents calling us saying that a group of girls or a group of guys, um, was going back and forth conversing on social media last night, and they wanted to make us aware of it. Uh, sometimes by the time they make us aware of it, it's too late. Um, sometimes we, the investigation can take, for the way the parents call us, one investigation can take up to an hour to get all the way done, so that we don't have conflict. So for as many fights as we had in February, we may, we probably were able to deter or do something alternate for more than those fights. Because it is a constant struggle to struggle against social media.
Wow. Thank you for that insight.
I have another question.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so this fight, on the first offense, where, uh, two individuals involved, are both individuals suspended on the first offense?
Yes. I, always, it's always, they're gonna be suspended. We're gonna always follow the policy, yes.
Both individuals?
Are you talking about a specific fight, or are you talking about fights in general?
I'm just talking about a fight in general.
Yes.
Okay, where two, uh, students assaulted each other, they both are suspended?
Yes.
Okay. How many SRO officers do you have at Columbus Middle School?
SRO officer, officer one and one SSO officer.
Thank you.
Do you feel like your SSOs and officers and securities are enough for that school of that size?
Do I feel like one is enough?
Do you feel like what you have is enough for the school of that size?
No. But this has been addressed. Uh, Mr. Chapman and I, we stay in constant communication. Mr. Chapman was actually there, present the day that I had three, um, physical altercations. He was there just checking on me about, I think, altogether or something else. Um, we walked to the, um, the foyer, the rotunda, and he was able to witness right then how in three, in five minutes, going three different directions. I had three different fights. Um, not even related, not gang, nothing like that. It was just conflict that, um, the students had. And he witnessed how we run to the left, run to the right, stop, turn around, grab, push these students in, turn around, go back and get more students, stop, turn around, go back and get more students if necessary. Um, he was there that day. Seeing is believing. Sometimes talking about something is one thing, but when you're able to be there and able to see how instant things can happen, and the manpower that's not there, I think he and I had an extensive, we've had several, I think we just had a conversation yesterday and today about the, um, help that I needed, that I need.
And I know that your assistant principals help you with observations in classrooms, correct?
They do.
So they aren't able to always do discipline, so there is a great need for your officers?
So to do discipline, our officers wouldn't necessarily do discipline. Now, they would be on the halls. They would be more present, and, you know, obviously, the more present you are, obviously, we hope to deter. You know, the, the more that you see police riding in the neighborhood, the less likely that crime would happen. So yes, ma'am, there's definitely a need to have, uh, more boots on the ground to, um, head off altercations. But when Mr. Chapman was there, we were present, um, at the moment, but just spontaneously, instantly, middle school.
Well, it is a known fact that middle school is the hardest. It's harder than high school.
What I do wanna say that, um, you did approve for some additional SROs to be a part of the system, and so, for, for, yeah, five. And, you know, we had our job fair this past weekend, and we did have some officers show up interested in the position. So Chief Brown is going through that process of, um, interviewing those, um, individuals to bring them, bring them on board. So, uh, with your help of increasing that salary and everything, I think that really drew some, drew more people in to be a part of it. So we are looking to, uh, staff her a little more with the SR, SROs, um, to give her that support that she needs. And one thing that we do wanna recognize, you know, school is coming to a close, and students are, you know, becoming a little more frustrated, and we're gonna have to, you know, just, be more diligent about, you know, watching students as they go through the day, because things like this, we're, you know, more likely to increase. We're not, you know, where, where we're wanting to pay attention to them. So that's a conversation that we are going to continue to have with the principals and, uh, let them know. Just continue, you know, to watch out, because things are, there will be an uptick in some of the behaviors, because students are getting tired, and they, they're ready for the year to end.
So to piggyback off of what Brian said, uh, to Ms. Williams. What's your SRO, uh, primary role and responsibility at the school? I know, uh, you as, you as principal along with this, uh, basically deal with this, but, but from the SRO, uh, role and responsibility.
Well, you know that they can make an arrest, um, whenever there's any illegal paraphernalia, um, or weapons or anything on that nature. So, uh, let's say if we found a student who is in possession of a weapon, we automatically turn that. So let's say if we found a student who is in possession of a weapon, we automatically turn that over to the SRO at that point. And it becomes a criminal matter and we stand down and they stand forward. They do patrol the halls. They patrol the halls during every class period, they do check restrooms for us. They are now a little bit, since this year has, we've given more attention to it. They are present on the hall at all times this year. Meaning even during class change, once they patrol the hall, they don't go back into their quarters. They do remain on the hall, they actually sit out at a table to be close to student interaction. They do go down in lunchtime, they are very, very present in our cafeteria. They are during this missile, well, even in the mornings when we're doing our weapons check, when we're doing our metal detectors, they are present. We have five checkpoints when we are doing our metal detectors. So they are present, I only have two, so they are present during the time that we are doing those searches. You know, we have to do searches three times a week. So they are present during those times as well.
So you discussed this matter with Mr. Chapman and Chief Brown. So from the middle school standpoint, you as principal, so you all discussion, so you make, quite sure you make a recommendation to the board. So how many SROs, officers, you all request, you think you need that there?
I've told you, I have three.
I know middle schools are difficult. A school deal with. So I'm just asking, what do you all request from the board? Have you all got to that point yet? And y'all discussing what y'all ask the board, how many SROs or whatever in the budget process?
Well, we were approved for five in the last meeting, so that will give three to the middle school. And they had the others at the, well, at the high school. We also tried to support with Union Success Academy as well. We will continue to use our SROs as the elementary school level, but our SROs at the high school as well as middle school.
So how many will you have at the high school total when you do the adjustments?
With the, currently we have, with five additional, we're able to get, you know, five in. With, currently they have one at the middle school that will give them two more, so that will be three. With Chief Brown in addition to the high school, so that would give them three or four at the high school to carry out those decisions.
So how many do we have at the high school as we speak?
Currently we have one SRO.
SRO?
Yes, yes, one SRO. And again, I think with the, with the support of the board increasing that, it's been somewhat difficult. Individuals coming in with more support. I think that's why we're getting more interest in those positions. And so that will help improve those numbers. SROs.
And how many at Union?
Right now we have an SRO in Union.
One.
Yes, one SRO.
Our benchmark assessment is just pleased with us showing the growth that we are growing. We are still utilizing all of our internal coaches. We are spending our allocated money. We're about finished with the, we're finished with twenty-one. We're absorbing all of our twenty-two money at this time. Any further questions for me about Columbus Middle School?
Any other questions for? Thank you so much, Ms. Williams. For your ever for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Now, board will hear from Mr. Shana of the Juul litigation settlement.
All right, Mr. Shana, this is SRO group board attorney. Uh, you are now by the way.
Perfect, eight, 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 very, very much. Appreciate your time. So I would like to buy you an update on the Juul litigation that your district joined a while back. I'd like to give you a summary of where we've been at at this point. So we started this case three years ago. They have almost fifteen hundred Juul districts across the country against Juul labs, the individual members, the board members who ran the company in Altria, who is the parent company of Kilorthoros, who own a force of Juul. And the focus of these, of this case was these events conduct of marketing their products to children and failing to warn about the harms of the product. For these past three years, we've been going through the litigation process, they take that decision, combing through over millions of documents at this point and preparing for our first trial, which was supposed to be this last member. What was going on at the same time was the FDA started regulating the bait industry. And last summer, the FDA went and denied Juul's application to sell their product, which meant that Juul was the business within twenty-four hours because they were able to take their product off the market. Juul in response went and appealed the FDA's decision and they're still in this appeals process. Right before the November trial, Juul and individual founders, directors and board members wanted to see if they could resolve the case. And so with the assistance of bankruptcy counsel, a resolution was made. And so the, what ended up getting done with the assistance of attorney generals across the country was there's now federal court orders restricting Juul's sales, sales and marketing practices moving forward. That's, that's for simple federal court. In addition, the FDA now made clear that they are not going to be approving any play-bait, which is very important because that is what really brought the kids to this product. Now, on the monetary component, the total settlement is for, is one point two billion dollars. That amount resolves not only the government entity portion of the case, but also resolves about ten thousand personal injury cases, a consumer class action, and about thirty tribal cases. Six hundred million of the one point two billion is for the government entities only. So it shows you the strength of the case was, you know, the school district has the strongest base of litigation. Now, because it's not a class action, only those school districts that were involved in this litigation are going to be receiving any of the funds. But what happened is the settlement administrator was appointed who created a formula to determine how much each school district gets. And the main factors in determining how much each school district gets was, was, was four parts. One, how large is the school district's student population was. Two, how many high school students there are. Three, how many buildings you have, because we're discussing the need for bait detectors. Then finally, when did this just join? Have they been involved in the case early or did they join a couple of months before the litigation set up? So with those factors, the administrative administrator came up with a number. And for your district, the settlement offer is six thousand seven hundred fifty-six dollars. Now regarding those funds, they are unrestricted, so the district uses it as it wishes. And then the other part two is we want to make sure that these funds would come in a short period of time because when, when there are cases like this with public entities, they could end up dedicating over ten, twenty years. So in this case, fifty percent will be paid at this fall and then twelve and a half percent will be paid every December until December twenty twenty-six, including this December. So next year, your district will receive sixty-two and a half percent of the settlement. Now, this is, this settlement is bankruptcy protected. If Juul at any point goes into bankruptcy, so that we can say that the settlement is guaranteed. This does not resolve the case against Altria. Altria is my, my bigger corporation, was one of the major targets in this case. Our trial against Altria will be at the end of April. And so our hope is that within the next year that we're coming forward to you with another resolution on the Altria portion of this case. So with that being said, I wanted to open up to any questions.
I think we might have any questions?
I appreciate it, I appreciate the board's approval. Resolve that forceful litigation.
Okay. We're requesting a motion to accept the, um, the settlement from the Juul litigation settlement. And the amount of six thousand seven hundred fifty-six dollars. All right, Mr. Sparks made the motion. Dr. Brown made the second, any discussion?
Yes, I've got a question, Mr. Shana. This is a board attorney. Mr. Shana, I know you took this on a contingent basis. Is that, are you getting a separate fee approved or is it coming out of this amount?
It's gonna be coming out of that amount. So as you may recall, we did it on a reduced contingency fee. So instead of forty percent, it's twenty-five percent. But that fee won't be coming out upfront. We'll be taking our fee at the same time the district gets each one of the payments.
Okay.
Whoops.
Okay, all in favor? Please raise your right hand. And it is unanimous, the pass.
Columbus School District has approved the settlement.
All right, thank you all very much for your time.
Okay, next board will have, for FYI purposes, our benchmark information presented by Mrs. Wilson, the interim superintendent of student services. Information from, presentation from special programs, special education and gifted by Mrs. Valerie Bailey and federal programs or update by Mrs. Emma Cornwall, excuse me. This information is in our supplementary items. Please note that board and if you haven't taken a look at it, please look at it. Next, we'll move on to item six. We're going to open forum. Do we have anyone? We don't have anyone for open forum. At this time, we'll go to item eight. Office of the interim superintendent and Mrs. Wilson and Craig Chapman. Any superintendent travel reports? Okay. All right, next we'll move to the interim superintendent recommendations for this upcoming school year. Consideration and discussion to approve the certified staff for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. Oh, I'm sorry.
So move.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Sparks made the motion, I'll make the second. Any discussion? All in favor? Please raise your right hand. And it is unanimous, the item passes. Next we'll have, do we go get her now? She had to stay out last time, okay. Consideration and discussion to approve classified staff for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. Requesting a motion.
So move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Dr. Schumake and a second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? All in favor? Please raise your right hand and it is unanimous, it passes. We'll wait for Dr. Brown. Next we'll have consideration and discussion to approve the recommendation of FY twenty-four personnel for supplement, supplemental positions. Requesting a motion.
So move.
We have a motion, I'll make the second by Mr. Smith. Mr. Smith made the motion, I'll make the second. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. And it is unanimous. Next we'll have consideration and our discussion to approve administrative resignations.
So move.
Okay, Mr. Sparks made the motion.
Second.
Mr. Smith made the second. Any discussion? If no discussion, please raise your right, all in favor, please raise your right hand. And it is unanimous. Consideration, the next item is consideration and discussion to approve the personnel items submitted by the Office of Human Resources. I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Smith made the second. Any discussion? If no discussion, please raise your right hand, all in favor. Okay, and it is unanimous. All right, at this time, oh, thank you. At this time, we will have Ms. Zion Doss to come up, please.
Zion, we, you read your information earlier, but we're gonna read it again just for you. The mission of Columbus Municipal School District is to provide the skills necessary to be college workforce enlistment ready by building bridges among students, parents, community and all district employees. Vision is to, is student-centered, excellent-driven. Today, we want to recognize you, Zion, for you demonstrating your skills, your workforce skills being ready before you graduate. You're a tenth grader in the Cal's classroom, medical technology classroom. Zion, you step forward, you perform the medical procedure of a tourniquet on a staff member who will suffer the medical issue. Not only did you impress the faculty, nurses and the paramedics, but the injured staff member was more amazed by your skills than his concern of injury. You were recently featured in the commercial dispatch for representing Columbus High School and Columbus Municipal School District and we thank you for your efforts. So on behalf of Columbus Municipal School District, we want to recognize you, Zion, for your efforts. Thank you.
Okay, sorry about that. Congratulations again to Zion Doss. Next we'll have a consideration to approve our monthly financial reports, policy DI. Requesting a motion to approve items A through I, which includes the fund balance report, the cash balance report, the budget status report, monthly revenue report and the monthly expenditure report, the bank statements and the budget amendments, the claims docket and the fixed asset disposals. I'll make the motion.
Second.
Mr. Sparks made the second, any discussion? No discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. And it is unanimous. Next we have our chief financial officer's updates. We have our avalorum tax collection. We have our avalorum tax collection, CMSD fund balance trends, our bank and cash balance yearly comparison, our student events activity report and federal programs and IDEA monthly financial review. Board, I'm sure we've had an opportunity to look at these items. Do we have any questions or concerns or discussions? Any questions? No questions? No one? Okay, alright. Next, we'll have our consent agenda, which is item 10. Our monthly policy review update, policy BD, policy BDB, policy BDE. This is where next month we'll take on, take up the item for consideration and discussion to approve the following policies. Board members, please take a look at these items. Policy BCA DA, taping of conferences and hearings and policy ICG, the sex-related education, which we were already informed about last month. Okay? Next, we'll have consideration and discussion to approve agreements, contracts, memorandum of understandings, out-of-state travel, field trips and student transfers, which includes item one, which is the shredd and disposal. Item two, rental and lease, rent a space lease agreement. And then the next item is the MOU for MSMS to use the track and field over at the high school. And then we have McKellar Technology Center overnight field trip to participate in Mississippi State Health Occupation Student of America in Jackson, Mississippi, March 28th through the 30th. And then we have the advertisement for the renewal contract with Commercial Dispatch. And last, we have the advertising for the lawn care services. Okay? Requesting a motion for items one through six.
So moved.
Have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Smith.
Miss Young, a question.
Yes, uh-huh.
Uh, is that also, that's also including A, the policies under A, right?
The policies under A is for our, you know, we have to review them for one month prior and then next month we'll vote.
So just for B.
Okay, just for B. Okay. Mr. Sparks? All in favor? Please raise your right hand. And it is unanimous. Next, we have our dates to remember. We have our academics, March 10th, third, nine weeks in. March 13th through the 17th, which is spring break. I know everyone will be excited about that. March 23rd, we have our report cards will be issued. April the 7th is Good Friday. April the 18th, progress reports will be issued. And then two, we have athletics and board meetings. Our Board of Trustees' next meeting is April the 5th with, at Franklin at 11:30. That's where we tour the school. It takes maybe an hour or so for those that are able to participate. Then we have April the 11th, the Board of Trustee regular meeting at Brandon Central Services at 6:00 PM. Alright. Next, we're going to close the termination for executive session. Okay, at this time, we're going to close the termination. We'll be out to make our announcements. Thank you. Oh, motion by?
Yeah.
Schumake. Oh, I'm so sorry. Please, all in favor, I forgot to vote. All in favor? Alright, for close determination, and it is unanimous.
For Craig Chapman, she'll be named as our interim superintendent for the March twenty 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 three until June thirty, twenty twenty.
For Craig Chapman, she'll be named as our interim superintendent for the March twentieth, twenty twenty-three until June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, um, or until the period, or, or until a permanent superintendent is hired, excuse me.
So move.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second by, a motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Dr. Brown, any discussion? If no discussion, um, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. All right, at this time, we'll take up the next item in the election of our, um, school board members, officers for the next, for the, this upcoming year. Um, we have item A, board president.
Um, I'd like to make a motion, um, to nominate, um, Ms., Ms., Ms. Young as board president.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Sparks and a second by Mr. Smith, do we have any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, next, we have our board vice president. Um, at this time, I'd like to make a motion for Mr. Sparks to, um, carry out the role as board vice president for the upcoming year.
Second.
We have, um, a motion by myself, Young, and a second by Mr. Smith, any discussion? If no discussion, please raise your right hand, all in favor. And last item we have is board secretary.
A motion that we move to nominate, make, is Dr. Schumake or Board Secretary.
Okay, I'll make the second, for our influence, Dr. Schumake as secretary. Um, we have a motion by Dr. Brown, a second by Dr. Sh-, um, I mean, myself, excuse me, thank you, any discussion? If no discussion, please raise your right hand, and it is unanimous. At this time, we're requesting a motion to adjourn, oh, sorry. Oh, yes, sorry, um, at this time, we have some items, some personnel items, is that correct, Mr. Chapman, for the next upcoming? Do you have, we still have personnel items, let me see if you have. Um, the board was presented with, um, March the, are we available, let me ask that first.
On the twenty-first?
On the twenty-first. What, what's a good time for you all, Mr. Smith?
Eleven-thirty would work for me.
You can't.
I'm good on the, eleven-thirty.
Wait a minute.
You said, you said eleven-thirty, hold on just one minute, because that is my spring break.
Oh, is it?
Yeah. Give me just a second, I'll tell you exactly, and I have made some prior commitments for that.
Oh, okay.
But let me just give you a time, hold on just a minute.
Okay.
You said, uh, eleven-thirty?
I'm sorry, yes, eleven-twenty-four.
Yeah, that's, that's good.
What time works, does, does eleven-thirty work?
Eleven-thirty.
Okay, eleven-thirty, Mr. Smith, did you check your calendar? Okay, yes, can you call in, you can call in, okay, Dr. Schumake, that work for you?
Try to get her phone.
She's already, okay, awesome, so we will, um, we need a motion to recess this meeting and, um, until March twenty-first at eleven-thirty via teams.
So move.
Second.
Okay, we have, uh, motion by Mr. Sparks and a second by Dr. Brown, any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand, all right, thank you.
Congratulations to you.